Happy New Year, everyone. I would like to start a new year by, uh, by, uh, by, uh, excuse my mind. Anyway, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Action number, action item number one A is the schedule on minutes for September 3rd, 2008. May I have a motion to approve the minute?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item number one B, policy calendar number one is the Royal BMCC, John Jay College, executive vice chancellor, President DeRoue.
Thank you. This program is another one of the programs that's arising from the very successful partnership initiatives between John Jay College and the community colleges across CUNY. As I, probably most people here know, John Jay College has a multi-year plan whereby they are going to stop giving associate degrees and focus on baccalaureate education and graduate education. But as a result, they want to make sure they have very strong partnerships with a number of community colleges so that students will have a seamless path to John Jay by starting in a community college. And they are really doing an outstanding, outstanding job with this. And so this is an example, this program, this dual joint AS and BS in science for forensics and forensic science is an example of one of these wonderful partnerships. Students will be admitted to both the associate degree program at BMCC and to the baccalaureate part of the program at John Jay College simultaneously. They can therefore transfer to the upper division part of the program seamlessly without any loss of credit. After graduating with the BS, students will be well-prepared for entering the workforce as forensic scientists or continuing graduate study in the biological and physical sciences.
Any questions?
It's a, it's a very good program, but as I'm sure everyone understands, it's going to require a lot of support for the BMCC students. I'm just thinking of how overcrowded the conditions are there now. I hope they have small class sizes and mentoring and tutoring and transfer guidance and, and, and so on. It's a, I think it's an excellent program, particularly because it's a STEM discipline and, you know, BMCC is going to bring in a lot of diverse students who have previously not been, not been present in that. I, I also noticed that out of the 60 credits, there were only five elective credits. And, you know, on the one hand, just reading the program, I really felt the, the pressure to get in, the science and the math preparation and how important that's going to be. But I, I felt a little sad at the paucity of just free liberal arts electives.
We have representatives here from BMCC, perhaps they would want to address, and from John Jay.
I'll respond to the issue of the overcrowdedness, and then I'll let Seid respond to the liberal arts part. But as it relates to what we're trying to do initially, because obviously we won't be getting our building at Pittman Hall until 2012, but it is our hope to be able to begin the program with some shared facilities on the John Jay campus to make an easier transition for those students. We have, we are in conversations now with John Jay about utilization of some of their space on Fridays and Saturdays so we can begin the program.
I'm not clear what you meant about the liberal arts because the program is very full with English, it's with social sciences.
Yeah.
The thrust of the forensic science is science, so therefore you will see more science as if you were seeing for any of our AS degrees, members in science, it would be the same.
No, I, I understand, especially since the, the required credits were reduced some years ago from 68 to 60 in the community colleges. I'm not saying, I'm, I'm not saying that there's a problem with the program. I just, I just feel sad about the, the enforced loss of, of free electives in so many of our programs now. It was just an observation.
That's just a general statement about curriculum.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions?
I'd like to congratulate both colleges for establishing this joint program. It's certainly a model for what ought to be done in other disciplines as well. It is being done between John Jay and other schools, but throughout the university because concern for articulation is a genuine concern, and this is something that addresses that concern very well. At the same time, for BMCC, it's also a commitment. The laboratory-intensive programs like this take a large amount of OTPS. OTPS is certainly under strain in the university in a time of less than adequate budget, and I'm pleased that, at least implicitly, BMCC is not only able to provide the space through the association with John Jay, but also the budget, the laboratory supply budgets, as well as for staffing, the, and less college laboratory technicians and other things that are necessary to run a quality program like this.
I'm very, very pleased, I know Jane and I both are, that our faculty have been meeting consistently and have just been granted a major grant in science, for forensic and science. And so there will be funds through that grant for the faculty, for the OTPs, for equipment, and for professional development.
It is a very interesting, exciting program.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? No? Like to move this item? May I have a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye. Nays? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item number one B two, Kingsborough Community College.
Okay. This program is meant to prepare students for entry-level jobs in the fashion industry. Potential employers include retailers, textile and apparel manufacturers, and fashion studios. The program responds to student demand, building on the existing fashion merchandising option within KCC's retail merchandising program. It will be the first such degree at CUNY. And I should say that Kingsborough, for this AS in fashion design, provided extensive information about the demand for positions for students trained in this program.
Questions, comments? No? I'd like to move this item.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? The motion carries. Also, we'd like to take this moment to welcome the student member of the committee to call a provost to the committee. Item number one B C, Lehman College Health Equity Institute.
Okay. This institute will be housed on the Lehman College campus. It will represent a collaboration among Lehman, Brooklyn, Hunter, and the Graduate Center, working closely with the public health programs as well as other CUNY graduate programs with relevance to urban public health issues. The institute is expected to provide a home for interdisciplinary population-based research across CUNY campuses and with community partners. The primary focus will be on the analysis of the social determinants of health that influence morbidity and mortality rates. The institute will be supported by external grants as well as by contributions to support faculty reassigning time and other moderate expenses that the institute will have by participating campuses.
Questions? Comments?
What, what will the role of Lehman faculty and students be on, in this institute?
Perhaps the Lehman representatives would like to detail that.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
With me is Professor Marilyn Aguirre Molina of our Department of Health Sciences, who really is the architect, the prime mover, if you could say, of this institute, about which I'm very excited. I think it's a, it's a great idea. And I'd like to ask her, as a member of the faculty, to perhaps address the question of what is the role of the faculty in this.
The Lehman faculty are involved, I guess, in a very extensive way when you compare it with other faculty across the university. There will be faculty across the university who will have affiliate relationships with us, but in particular, the Lehman faculty are, two, two of the faculty are taking lead responsibility in the core areas, the research core and the capacity building core. And as needed, some of the faculty will serve as advisors to graduate students, MPH, and doctoral students who will be doing research and other projects as part of the institute. So there'll be a significant amount of involvement in it.
Next up, Philip.
Just as a Lehman College faculty member, I've expressed my pleasure that the college is doing this, that, that, that we are doing this. As we know, the university is engaged in a significant effort in public health, and this is clearly going to be part of Lehman's contribution to this effort. And Lehman has a strong set of programs in this area, and this will help us participate in whatever's done at the University of White柳. Strongly support those.
I'd like to just finally add that this institute is the result not only of a lot of effort on the part of not just Lehman faculty, but in consultation with others across CUNY and beyond, because there are a number of community agencies and partners outside that we will partner with to do some of this research. But it's, it begins with significant amount of external funding that Professor Aguirre Molina has been able to secure. Lehman is obviously supporting it to some extent, but the idea is to be able to attract future funding for research as we go on past 2010.
I think it's great that you're doing this because Lehman is one of the, one of the principal parties to the establishment of our new School of Public Health, along with Brooklyn College and lead being Hunter. And as I read this material closely, so much of your research is going to be focused on some of the primary movers that led us to establish the School of Public Health. So I see this as really a research arm of the School of Public Health, and I think it would be greatly commended. Very well-written, very well-thought-out. And keep on bringing in the dollars.
Do your best.
Any other questions? If not, I'd like to move this item. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? The motion carries. Item number two, the information items.
Okay. It's now we have, we have two information items, which are both centers that are being, that are established at the graduates, at the graduate school and university center. And I just want to say a little bit about the difference. We, what was just approved was an institute. Institutes are university entities that involve more than one CUNY campus. Centers involve just one CUNY campus, so they are localized to one campus. They are organized units of a single college of the university whose mission is to sponsor, coordinate, and promote research, training, instruction, or service. And they should not duplicate or substantially compete with the mission of university-wide entities. And what happens with centers is after the Office of Academic Affairs has reviewed proposed centers for conformity with the policy, the college places the item in the special action section of the university report, and then I present the center to this committee, to cap. So that's the procedure. So the first of these two centers is the Luxembourg Income Study Center. And this center will function as the U.S. base of an international nonprofit organization operating out of Luxembourg City and funded by the National Science and Social Science Research Foundations of its member countries. Its purpose is to encourage research on income, earnings, and a range of labor market outcomes, to support curricular development for an interdisciplinary credit-bearing course, and to organize symposia and other scholarly activities. The center has an initial operating budget in place for three years, thanks to a combination of support committed to by the Graduate Center as well as by sizable outside grants. It is expected that the center will become self-sustaining within three years. And I just want to add that the director of the center is Dr. Janet Gornick, who is a faculty member whom I know well from Baruch, but who's now a faculty member at the Graduate Center. So that's the first information item. Should I, are there any questions, or I should go on to the second one?
Yeah.
Go on to the second one?
Yes.
Okay. The second one, this center, this is the Global Center for the Responsibility to Protect. This center is named after a UN Commission report, "The Responsibility to Protect," which forms a new international consensus on how to respond in the face of massive violations of human rights and humanitarian law. The Global Center will generate research and support the activities of NGOs around the world that are working on translating the document's endorsement by the UN General Assembly into a set of practical guidelines. It will focus on helping create structures and processes capable of delivering effective prevention and reaction, and stimulating the political will to act when the next potential mass violence situation arises. It will offer assistance to the UN Special Advisor on the Prevention of Genocide, who is Francis Dane, and Special Advisor Edward Luck. The center is linked to five major international NGOs and will be financially self-sustaining through outside grants. And I just want to add that the director of the center is Dr. Thomas Weiss, who is a faculty member at the Graduate Center.
I had noticed that there are dates in here about for March 2008, I think somewhere I saw February 2008. So I was just wondering what the current status of this center is.
My name is Brian Schwoss. I'm the vice president for research and sponsored programs at the Graduate Center. These centers have been in cooking, in the cooking stage for quite a while, that's why the dates may be there, and were earlier sent to the board, but there were some technicalities and sent back. Both centers, let me do first the Janet Gornick Center, which deals with Luxembourg Income Studies Group. That center was a conception of Janet Gornick, who was at Baruch College at the time, and the president of the Graduate Center. And that center has been operating for about two and a half years now, and so when it says it's become self-sufficient, it's almost self-sufficient now, so it's really operating very well with grants from the National Science Foundation, the Social Sciences, a part of the National Science Foundation, and the Sloan Foundation. And they issue many, many reports, and it will also cooperate with the Demographic Center, which has been established at, at Baruch College. So that's one center, and it's, the person in charge is a very experienced, qualified researcher with many, many years of research in this area. The second center is really part, and it probably will only exist for about five years, at least that's in the proposal, which is nice when centers disappear. That's important as well. It's very easy to create them and much harder to make them disappear. But they're responding to an emergency, and it's within the Ralph Brunch Institute for International Studies, which is directed by the same Tom Weiss. So it's a center within an institute. And he's been approached by the UN and many foundations, since he works so closely with the UN, that this is a center that they want to happen as a focus for these kinds of issues. And he's already gotten, again, because he gets a significant amount of money for the Ralph Brunch International Studies Center, Institute, he's already gotten commitments from the MacArthur Foundation for $50,000, then $200,000, and $200,000. So this center's also starting off self-sufficient.
Thank you. Very good. Okay.
There was a, I thought there was another question.
No? I don't think so. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other ideas?
I have the information.
Want to enroll them?
Yes. Yes. And I just want to thank Chair and Trustee Chen for the opportunity to speak with the committee on some enrollment issues that are currently facing the City University of New York and the academic implications of those issues. As you, I'm sure, all know, New York State and New York City, along with the rest of the world, are facing the worst financial crisis in a great many decades. This crisis means that many people have less money to spend than they had previously because of loss in their investments and/or less salary. And has, as has been shown many times in the past, when people cannot get a job due to a tightening in the job market, or when people need further education to get a satisfactory job, they're likely to choose, more likely to choose, spending their time pursuing undergraduate or graduate education. During times of financial constraint, people are also more likely to choose to start at a lower versus a higher-priced college, to, or to choose to stay at a lower-priced college instead of switching to a higher-priced one after, after the first two years of college. And they're also more likely to switch from a higher to a lower-priced college. At the same time, CUNY's reputation in recent years, under the leadership of Chancellor Goldstein, has been soaring. And CUNY's tuition at $4,000 per year for a full-time baccalaureate student is relatively low even for a public university. So for all of these reasons, it's not at all surprising that CUNY is seeing a huge and perhaps unprecedented increase in applications. But as much as we rejoice at these larger numbers, bigger is not necessarily better. We have to ensure that our growth rate is commensurate with our ability to provide a high-quality education, and we know that our rate of growth is probably unprecedented. The majority of our new students begin in the fall, but we also accept new students to start in the spring. And for Spring '09 compared to a similar point for Spring '08, we have already accepted 13% more freshmen and 4% more transfers. As a result, several colleges have already closed Spring '09 admissions, and others will probably close admissions soon. For Fall '09, we're still getting more data, but what we know so far is that we're significantly ahead of last year in applications. From what we can tell, the increases in applications seem to be occurring in all types of applications, from all types of high schools and to all types of CUNY colleges. When all is said and done, it is very possible that we will have a 15% increase in Fall ' '09 applications. And that means it is very possible that we will go over the previous maximum total enrollment for CUNY, which was in 1974, and was approximately 253,000 students in credit-bearing courses. We are very likely to go over that next fall. Now, the effects of this surge in applications are different for different CUNY colleges. Most of the senior colleges don't want to grow by much or at all. They feel that they will provide an optimal student education at basically their current size. So when they get more applications, they generally respond by raising their admission standards. Now, this has a number of good effects, which include greater student retention because better students are more likely to stay in, at a college, and also can result in higher rankings for a college. But this also means that more students don't get into the senior college, and they're very, they're therefore more likely to want to attend one of our community colleges. But the community colleges are already getting more applications because of the current environment. And the only requirement for enrolling in a community college is having a high school diploma. So a community college cannot respond to, to the current situation by increasing admission standards. It does not have that, the community colleges do not have that option. We also know that in this fiscal environment, we do not have unlimited student, resources for students. So we need to be extremely vigilant to ensure that we have sufficient resources for all the students whom we admit, while still adhering to the access part of our mission. But we do not accomplish anything if we enroll students whom we cannot educate. Now, one, there is one option that is open to assist our community colleges in this situation. Traditionally, our community colleges have admitted Fall students up until the very end of the summer, and I mean the very end. Now, there's extensive research from both within and outside of CUNY that tells us that students who are admitted at the very end of the summer are the least likely to succeed. And by success, I mean to stay in college and to graduate. We don't know really totally why this is the case. It may be that on average, and I mean on average, there are certainly exceptions, but on average, students who initiate going to college only a few weeks prior to the start of classes may be students who have relatively less motivation to go to college and who do not apply as much energy to their classes. But we definitely know that last-minute applications result in campuses having inadequate student support personnel for these students, and it also results in campuses having to scramble to test these students for appropriate placement in classes, and in departments particularly such as English and Math, having to scramble to find faculty to, to support, to teach newly added class sections. And these last-minute faculty are often part-time faculty, and they are part-time faculty who have not been able to find employment elsewhere. So all around, this is not a good way to start college. So we are therefore encouraging our community colleges to deal with the unusual enrollment pressures for Fall '09 by closing admissions prior to the very end of the summer. Students who apply too late will not be told that they cannot come to CUNY. They will just be told that they need to wait until January. But I should say that dealing with too many applicants is uncharted territory for most CUNY campuses, or many of them. And so we will be following the current situation very, very carefully, at all times keeping our eye on the data and on any research that can guide our decisions, and on doing whatever is possible to provide the best education for each of our students.
No matter what terms you may apply, it sounds as if there's going to be a significant increase in the number of students. Is there a correlation, or have there been any measures or coordination with regard to the extent to which increased numbers of students will impact on the physical capacity of each of the institutions to serve those students as well as the faculty capabilities? Are there relationships being developed? Do we know what those are at this point?
Yeah. We have data on the use of the, the percentage use of the facilities during the week, as to how many, you know, what percentage of the classrooms are being used, what percentage of the time. And there are only a couple of our campuses that are physically at capacity.
That was the real question I was asking. How close are we to capacity in some of our institutions?
Yeah. Most of them have some room, but it tends to be in not the most popular times of the week. So they will make adjustments by encouraging faculty to teach at those other times and encouraging students to attend class at those other times.
So will there be more faculty, or will students have, or will faculty have more students in their classes?
We are intending to increase the number of full-time faculty again next year. So we know that we can increase students somewhat and, and handle that, but not a huge amount.
This is a serious problem that, that the university is, is facing, and I've been addressing the presidents on this now for a good year and a half, because I've seen what has happened in this city as, as the university has burnished its reputation. And I've, and I've often said that higher education is a good example of an efficient market. Everybody has access to the same information and are making judgments on the basis of reputation and price. And when you do that, when the reput- And when you do that, when the reputation of the university goes up and the price continues to be competitive to other institutions, it's not unreasonable to expect that we would be getting more and more enrollment. Now, of course, this financial crisis that we're in is an outlier that is forcing a lot of dislocation into CUNY. So we have some serious issues to confront and to confront pretty quickly. I'm much more interested in retaining and graduating students by the students that we have finishing their studies and then going on with their life, rather than growing the institution through a revolving door of students coming in and not doing well. But that strategy is coming right up against the needs and challenges that you mentioned, our physical capacity to house the students, the inability to keep up with hiring full-time faculty. And I think full-time faculty makes a big difference in the life of students, rather than relying so heavily on part-time students. There's going to come a point in time where this is a problem that can only be solved by one of two things. One, a big infusion of capital into the university to allow it to have more capacity, physical capacity, and at the same time have an operating budget that allows you to put the right people in front of the classes. Or to have a totally different modality of instruction. And I think we're going to be faced with the fact that we're going to need to be doing much more online educating of students, as universities all over the United States are doing, facing similar kinds of problems. There are no other solutions other than capping enrollment and just saying to students, "We put a lock on the door, and you just don't have access anymore." I don't think that that, especially in a world in which we live today, where employers are going to be unforgiving of people that don't have skills, to take that strategy. And we're working on that, but it's a very, very difficult problem to crack. I mean, we could take the path of least resistance and said, "Let's just admit people, as many people as we get, you know, keep the place open 24 hours a day, seven days a week." But I know, and you know, that that is not a strategy that's going to create the kind of educational experience that we want for our students, so I just don't see that as a viable option at all. So those are some of the challenges that we're going to face as a university. Part of it is the successes that we've had at the university. People want to study here.
We should stop advertising some of my time.
Can you make sure that doesn't go on the minutes?
That's the way that I see it.
Well, actually, it's a good problem to have, but it does have its issues, clearly.
Let's also show how far this university have come, you know, since the '70s. Screw those to the entire team. Any other items?
Charles's point is actually quite good. Well, we're not going to eliminate advertising, but the kind of advertising we're doing probably should be reviewed at the very least. Maybe talk about quality rather than enrolling. I think you make a good point.
Well, I think that the truth of the matter is, as somebody who rides the subways a lot, I get to read the ads, and I think one of the things that I've noticed has been this emphasis on quality and the people we're here, which is a plus. But that in and of itself adds to the attraction when you add the price, and I think you used the phrase "burnishing" the image of the university. But I think that probably would add to one of your other objectives, which is retention, making sure people graduate.
I think at the end of the day, there's no better strategy than to admit a student and get that student a degree.
And a degree that's valued.
And a degree that is respected in the marketplace.
Which is part of what's happening. I think it's essential to continue a strategy of emphasizing CUNY's quality. Without a public image of quality and a reality of quality, without those two things, this university, no matter how many students it has today, won't be a viable operation in the future. It has to continue to say to the public that this is a quality institution. We are saying that, and that's a wonderful thing that we are saying it. I think we have to continue that, even if it brings in more students than we would like to, because we have to stand for high quality in the public eye now and in the future. Of course, we actually not only have to stand for it, we have to provide quality to our students. And that includes providing the courses at the time that students need them, in the correct sequence. Majors have sequences of courses. One has to be taken after another, and they have to be provided at the correct time. And as the number of students increase, it's going to be more and more of a challenge to do that. It's not simple, as many of us, if not all of us at this table, know. And it'll be one of our main challenges in the future.
I think that gives us an opportunity, though, to enhance our online offerings. And in terms of quality, I know we've just started doing that, but we can certainly, you know, improve it, and that can just kind of be the next chapter for CUNY, as well as, you know, solving some of this brick-and-mortar problem that we have as well.
Part of the other strategy that we're following, and obviously, our communication strategy has all been about the trajectory and the values that we all hold so dear here, and we're going to just continue to do that. But there are other ways of managing enrollment, and that is about changing the mix of the students that we have. We have not spoken as much as we should have spoken about graduate education. I mean, we have an extraordinary faculty here at this university of scholars of great renown, and many of our Ph.D. programs now are ranked very high, especially in humanities, the arts, and to some extent, the social sciences. We're making a big play now in science education with the Declaration of the Decade of the Sciences, and you will see Jay's good work over the next couple of months as we start emphasizing graduate education at this university. We can grow our enrollment quite substantially in graduate education, and we need to spend a little more time talking about that as well. So at the end of the day, it's a management problem, but management problems go so far without having resources, and we're working on trying to get those resources.
Okay. Anything else I'd like to call, a motion to adjourn? Sorry. Thank you, everyone.